I'd like to call this meeting of the Yankton Board of City Commissioners to order. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Sarda.
Here.
Burdick.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Knopf.
Mybaum.
Here.
Minor.
Here.
Moser.
Here.
Mayor Hoffner.
Present.
City Manager Nelson.
Here.
City Attorney Denherter.
Here.
We have a quorum, so we'll continue with our business. Number two under routine is the minutes of the regular meeting from June 12th.
I move that we approve the minutes.
Second. It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number three, City Manager, for Amy.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission in public, a couple of things for you all to consider and looking for a little bit of direction on. As you are aware, natural gas is a challenge in our portion of the state to economic development and growth. YIPG has been discussing this and is talking about writing letters to our national delegation regarding the importance of natural gas and the encouragement of our national delegation to work with others in Congress to make that more of a reality in our corner of the state. We discussed at YIPG, at the Executive Committee level, whether or not it would be useful for the Commission to also craft a letter encouraging that type of activity and endeavor. So I wanted to bring that forward to you and see if that was something you were interested in. If so, I would certainly draft a letter to them and have you all take a look at it prior to sending it.
I think it's important that we lend our voice to that effort.
Seeing some other head nods, okay. Another letter that I would like to discuss with you, as you are aware, the County Commission is working currently on conditional uses for hog confinement situation in the county and what parameters they would place around that. In the past, the City Commission has lent support to other ag and value-added ag-related businesses with a general letter of support to the County Commission. I had a brief email discussion with Don Kettering, the County Commission Chair. He said, you know, if that's something the City Commission would like to be happy to come and visit with you about what's happening to understand more of the concerns on either side, to make a determination from there. So I wanted to bring that forward to you to see where you wanted to take that.
I guess before we take any personal stand, I guess I'd like to hear, have them come and talk to us while it's a county issue. That's a big question that I personally get brought up to a lot lately, so whether we take a stand or not, I'd just like to hear more about it.
Amy, is that going to be possible? I thought that that was on the agenda for the meeting, I think on the 5th. I don't think we're going to have a Commission meeting for them to come and present anything.
I was not aware what date they were making that determination, so...
Yeah, it's July 5th. That's correct.
So perhaps we're not in enough time to hear that discussion.
Yeah, I agree with Chris. I think I'd rather have, know more about it than take a stance. And I know I've heard a lot about it in the paper and people talking, but I don't know if I'd be ready to say that as a Commissioner, I'd be in favor of it.
Okay. I will let County Commissioner Kettering know that. Also, I'm happy to say that I received a $500 scholarship from the South Dakota City Managers' Association to attend the fall conference, the International City Managers' Association Conference in San Antonio, which will cover the cost of my flight. But I wanted to talk with you all because that's something I was going to cut from the budget, being as we're making some contingency cuts. The City Manager of Canton has agreed that she would split the cost of a hotel room with me, so I think that I can go for relatively, quite a bit lower cost than I have in the past, about half. And I think I can work that into the budget. But I wanted to, before I accepted the scholarship or booked anything, make sure that you all were okay with me attending that's happening the end of October of this year. Any concerns there? Okay, thank you. Received an email this morning from Mayor Hoffner regarding our July 10th, 6:00 PM special meeting. He has sent an email requesting that on July 10th, in advance of your regular City Commission, we conduct a special meeting. The purpose of that meeting will be to hear from the outside agencies that you requested to hear presentations from. They have all been contacted and they'll be also scheduled then at your regular Commission meeting to take action on. We will send that notification out and make the press aware as well, but that will be a special meeting of the City Commission, so...
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, that'll be held here. I will not be able to attend that meeting, at least a portion of it. By statute, I'm committed to present the capital improvement budget every year to the Planning Commission as well as to the Parks Advisory Commission. That evening happens to be the Planning Commission meeting for July, so I'll be with Dave Mingo presenting that. Al will help field questions and things for that meeting, and as soon as I'm finished, I'll come in. So I'll be late to that, to those presentations, but I'll be in as soon as I'm able.
I'd interrupt and ask you a question on that, Amy. So is that to the full Commission and don't we have a separate body that they would present it to, an outside agency? They would come to that separate body first?
We have an outside agency committee at the budget meeting. We discussed last week that they would like to have the full Commission hear those presentations. So we do have an outside agency committee, however, that was the desire of those present at the budgeting meeting.
One comment, Amy, excuse me. I really, I'm really impressed with the GIS mapping. What a great tool. We knew it was good, but it goes beyond how well it's done, thanks to the staff and everyone that put it together, even with the interactive historic homes. It's incredible tool, and I know we're going to be able to utilize that for, good job.
Thank you. Unless there's any other questions or comments for me, I'll let you move on to your business.
Okay, thank you, Amy. This is the time and place. Anybody for public appearance? If not on the agenda, you're sure welcome to come forward at this time.
Also an opportunity for City Commissioners.
Okay. Go ahead.
If I may. So actually, just kind of following what we're looking forward to on July 10th, prior to that City Commission meeting, we'll be hearing from several of the outside agency groups requesting funding. And what I would like to do is just present to everybody here a proposal that is nothing that's going to have any action related to it here tonight, nothing that requires any votes, but it is just a proposal that is basically currently an opinion of a minority of City Commissioners here this evening, and I'd like to share it. And Dwayne's also putting up a couple of the itemized bullet points that I'll be talking about here. So I'd just like to preface it with this. We are committed to helping move our community forward. Forward Yankton is an itemized proposal that can maximize the opportunities to grow our community in 2018. This proposal represents a fiscally responsible strategy of aligning budgets, outside agencies, and community marketing. We are committed to the success of the following community assets: downtown Yankton, the NFAA, and the Fanta Memorial Park Pool. We're also committed to contributing to the creation of a future asset to our community, an indoor sports complex or fieldhouse. Forward Yankton bullet points are as follows: increase the funding of the downtown facade grant program by 200%. Increase the funding towards Yankton area progressive growth by 13%. Renew a $25,000 commitment to onward Yankton to be utilized exclusively towards downtown Yankton revitalization efforts. Renew a $25,000 commitment to Riverboat Days to be utilized exclusively towards achieving South Dakota's largest fireworks display. Immediately contribute $40,000 to NFAA in 2017 and commit $40,000 to NFAA in 2018 to help support the 2018 World Archery Indoor Championships. Create a new internal department, Marketing and Communication. Create a new internal position, Director of Marketing and Communication. Bring the Convention and Visitors Bureau Director into the Marketing and Communications Department as a Community Marketing Manager. Support the efforts of the Community Marketing Manager with a marketing promotion budget of up to $45,000. Transfer the Events and Promotions Coordinator position from the Park and Recreation Department to the Marketing and Communications Department. Earmark up to $500,000 from Triple B for the modernization of the Fanta Memorial Park Pool and the creation of an indoor sports complex, Fieldhouse. A forward mindset will require renewed commitments and making bold changes. The above commitments retain a balance in excess of $500,000 in the Triple B Fund, enabling the City Commission to act swiftly should community investment opportunities in the Fanta Memorial Park Pool and an indoor sports complex, Fieldhouse, be presented to the City Commission in 2017 or 2018. The above commitments are proof positive that we support the momentum and mission of our community's valued outside agencies. And so again, with that, this is just a conversation point at this time, something to consider in the weeks ahead.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Mybaum. Anybody else that would like to be on the agenda that's not scheduled? Okay, moving on, we have no consent items tonight, so we'll move on to old business. Number one, this is the time and place for a public hearing for assessment role, notches, vegetation abatement, memorandum 17-144 and 17-17. You need any discussion or do you want any questions or do you want to feel...
I'll move the memorandum and the resolution.
Thanks. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the public? Roll call, please.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Burdick.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye. Motion carried. Number two under old business is a public hearing for the sale of alcoholic beverages special event, memorandum 17-138 for the center on July 8th.
Move the memorandum.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the public? Roll call, please.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Burdick.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye. Motion carried. Number three under old business is a public hearing also for the sale of alcoholic beverage special event, memorandum 17-139 for July 29th for the center.
It's moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Minor.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Burdick.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Burdick.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye. Motion carried. Number five under old business, another public hearing for the sale of alcoholic beverage special event, memorandum 17-141 for December 31st for the center.
Move the memorandum.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the public? Roll call, please.
Sarda.
Aye.
Burdick.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye. Motion carried. But those seniors are very busy. That's great.
They're not all seniors at the center. You just have to be 18 and older.
18 or older, remember that. We'll be there, right, Dave? Thank you. We'll move on to new business at this time. Number one, our City Attorney Ross Denherter for a Commission orientation refresher, memorandum 17-142.
It's that time of year again for just a quick refresher on the do's and don'ts in your role as Commissioners to keep you guys out of trouble. First thing on my list here relates to quasi judicial proceedings. If you'll recall, those are the types of issues where you guys sit in judgment over others, where a particular request is brought before you. So you're basically deciding the fate of somebody. Conditional use permits, variances, petitions to vacate rights of way, resolutions of necessity regarding special assessments, an award of a bid, and tax abatements. It's not an exclusive list, but that's primarily what you guys will be evaluating in your quasi judicial role as judges. This does not apply to requests for funding. I don't really know why that is, but that falls under budgeting. So you can have communications with parties involved when there's requests for funds, but do not talk with the individual parties who are asking for permits and things that fall under this list because you can get in trouble. In fact, if, there's a statute on the books that says if you rely upon any evidence not produced at the public hearing or meeting regarding a quasi judicial matter, that you need to disclose the evidence publicly and include it in the information in the public record to afford all parties an opportunity to respond or participate. So if people present something to you in writing relating to a quasi judicial matter, make sure you provide a copy of that to Amy or to Al to disseminate to the entire board and do not participate in discussions with members of the public. If they bring a matter to your attention, politely deflect them. You're welcome to explain to them that you, the reasons why you're not allowed to talk to them about it, but you guys have to get all your information at this particular meeting. Or not this meeting, but the meeting when it's brought to your attention. As a general rule, the public may get copies of all public records. Under our state law, all records are now public unless there's an exception for the disclosure. So you'll see there a non-exclusive list of things that you cannot disclose, and as a result, if you ask Amy or Al or myself for some of these records, we may not be able to give them to you. Or more likely, you'll obtain some of this information in the scope of your duties or evaluating things, personnel-related issues, for instance. You might obtain some of these records. You're not allowed to present this information to the public, okay? So that would be employee records, medical records, you know, criminal justice reports, so police reports. You guys might obtain a lot of information in your role as Commissioners that may not be open to the public. Amy is really good about notifying you guys in advance of press releases and things of that nature so you can know what's going on and not be surprised by the media. But as a result, you may become privy to information that isn't public. So just be aware of that and try to protect confidential information. In addition, don't review, reveal any communications to or from me in my role as giving you legal advice in executive session or otherwise. You are entitled to attorney-client privilege. If you share those communications with other people, you can lose that privilege. Also, any comments made to or from other Commissioners when made in executive session. Executive session affords you the opportunity to keep those communications private. If you disclose them outside the Commission chambers, even to a spouse, you are jeopardizing the confidentiality of that information, okay? The public has a right to attend every official meeting of the City Commission. So what constitutes an official meeting? That's when there's proper notice of the meeting given to the public or the media and a quorum of the board is present and there is an intent or the actual deliberation or a vote upon matters of public concern. So we try to take a very proactive approach to the rules to prevent any controversy. So if you find yourself at an event where there are more than four Commissioners there and there wasn't a notice of a possible quorum event provided to the public, I would ask you nicely to draw straws, somebody leave, just because we want to make sure that we don't run afoul of the open meeting rules. It keeps you guys out of trouble. You guys could be prosecuted for violation of the open meetings rules.
Does the prosecution require, though, that there was an intent to deliberate and or a vote taken?
Oh, yes. Yeah, so if you find yourself...
We end up at a bar.
Yeah, you're not technically in violation of this, but people who see you guys congregating at some event, they don't know what you're talking about, and it breeds suspicion and drama and controversy that we really don't need to, you know, conduct the city's business. So best practices, keep yourselves out of the line of fire for that type of criticism. Makes my life easier.
Is there a means to give a general annual notice that any community events that take place?
You mean I have talked about that?
An example, homecoming, Riverboat Days. You know, I, personally, I think it's an overstrict reading of the open meeting rules when we're going to be at an event because obviously randomly, even if we're all invited, it could be to a, you know, a bank president's party or something, a retirement party, things like that, where there's never an intent to have any type of meeting or deliberate. And so I'm just wondering if there's a means to say in those types of events. So then if it gets to that public perception, I mean, obviously, if, you know, I think this group is smart enough that nine of us shouldn't be sitting around a table at a bar or a restaurant, you know, I'm thinking more of a public-type facility or meeting or event, then we sort of quash that concern of, look, we've already said every year that, you know, sporting events and community events, you may just have more than four Commissioners present. Because, you know, we've had those situations where all of a sudden you see five people and one says, well, I'll leave, and it doesn't make a lot of sense to me because we're not even there to necessarily even communicate with each other, let alone have a meeting.
I don't disagree with you. I just think it's impractical to make a list that will be good for the year. I mean, events come up that we weren't even aware of two weeks prior. I believe there was recently a event, I think, what, Wednesday, Thursday of last week, that was by invitation only, and Commissioners weren't aware that there were going to be other Commissioners there until they got there and they saw other Commissioners that had been invited. And we can't notify the press about a private function. And we may not get them all. I just, I'm looking for a best practice to keep the controversy to a minimum. I think we have a standing list of functions that will occur year after year, and that's why when we know they're coming up, we notify the press and we put it on the agenda as a possible quorum event, and we move forward. I just ask you guys to help me help you stay out of trouble. If you find yourself at an event when there, where there's at least five Commissioners, you do yourselves a service by somebody taking off so that no one accuses us of having a meeting behind closed doors outside the presence of the public. Those accusations are thrown around even when people think there might be five Commissioners at a meeting. That was part of the reason we had a powwow with the Members of the Press a couple months ago, just to try to maintain a solid footing and best practices so that we are not viewed with suspicion.
And I understand the appearance of impropriety. How much notice is necessary?
Well, in terms of notifying of an actual special meeting, you only have to provide notice and post the agenda 24 hours in advance, but...
So I guess what I'm thinking, you know, then the burden is really on us to say, hey, there's an event I was invited to, so Amy can just send out a blanket, hey, there's a chamber event that possibly five Commissioners could be at, or a majority or a quorum could be present, no action, you know? So any event that comes up, if we give her 24 hours notice, she can just put out a press release.
Preferably 48 hours notice because we gotta provide notice 24 hours in advance. But Amy's already pretty good about notifying the press. How do you do that? I presume you send them an email and just let them know?
We only send an email when we know there's an event. If we can get it on the agenda, we do, but if we don't have time, we'll just send an email out and say there's no business conducted or no action to be taken. It's a, you know, chamber function or a school function or whatever it happens to be.
Yeah, and oftentimes, that's all it requires, just let them know ahead of time that it's going to happen, so. And we're trying to reach out to third parties that invite Commissioners and just make sure they give us a heads up if they know they're going to invite a quorum of Commissioners to an event, and then we can just get it on the agenda and then it doesn't matter. In the same line as not attending an unnoticed public meeting, be very careful in your online communications with each other, particularly by way of email. There's a lot of information that you guys receive from the City Manager's office or from me or from Al that would be addressed to all of you. Be careful never to hit reply all if you're going to respond. Just respond directly to Amy or to whoever the initial sender was. If you communicate as a reply all, you are now starting a discussion thread about city business that hasn't been noticed to the public. This type of communication has now been brought into the purview of open meetings by statute. It was previously construed that it was included, now it's officially included. So that one's an important one, just be careful if you have to reply. Executive session is legal if there is a motion identifying the purpose for the closure and a majority of vote of those present vote to enter into the executive session. The purposes that are permitted under law are employee matters, not independent contractor matters, employee or personnel matters such as hiring, performance, discipline, reorganization, et cetera. Proposed or pending litigation with legal counsel, so that would be communication with me about an issue of threatened or suspected potential litigation or actual litigation. Contractual matters with legal counsel. This relates to the actual negotiation of the contract, the terms, the meat of the contract. Preparing for or negotiating with employee representatives on labor issues. And marketing or pricing strategies of city-owned businesses when public discussions may be harmful to the competitive position of the business. That would be like the Summit Center or the golf course. In executive session, do not deliberate on a topic not disclosed to the public. I will always try to do my best to keep you guys on point, out of trouble, but help me by policing yourselves. And do not vote in the executive session. There's always a tendency to try to straw pull. Avoid that, okay? We're just discussing for the purpose of discussing. Get ourselves pointed in the right direction. We do not, we do not make business, we do not decide things in executive session, all right? We come out and we have our public comment period and we vote in normal session. Make sense, or general session? The public cannot attend legal executive sessions. Those who may attend include the City Manager, she's got the right to attend, and participate in all executive sessions unless the topic is her removal. The City Attorney and the City Finance Officer may attend an executive session at the discretion of the board. Any other city employee may attend an executive session at the discretion of the board. As a general rule, you should participate in the deliberation at a meeting and then vote on every item, but do not debate or vote when there is not a quorum present, if there is an improper public notice of the meeting or the item in question, or you have a conflict of interest or your vote would present the appearance of bias or conflict of interest as follows. By statute, if you have a direct pecuniary interest in the matter before the governing body benefiting your own property or affording a direct financial gain, you cannot vote on the matter. If at least two-thirds of this governing body votes that you have an identifiable conflict of interest, that should prohibit you from voting on the specific matter. So if you guys think somebody on this board has a conflict of interest, but they don't think they have a conflict of interest, you guys can vote on it, two-thirds of the whole body. So if six of you decide that that's a conflict, you can vote on it and disqualify that individual from voting on that particular issue. That's also by statute. In quasi judicial matters... In quasi-judicial matters, you should not vote when the following are present. An indirect pecuniary interest that financially benefits one closely tied to you, such as a spouse, employer, or a family member. Or a direct personal interest that benefits you, a blood relative, or a close friend in a non-financial way, but a matter of great importance, as in the case, for instance, of a commissioner's mother being in a nursing home, subject to a zoning issue before the board, just by way of example. Or an indirect personal interest in which an individual's judgment may be affected because of membership in some organization, and a desire to help the organization further its policies or interests. That's quasi-judicial. Those rules are more strict. You're sitting in judgment, and the reason for those more strict rules are, they call it due process. Constitutional due process law requires a neutral decision-maker. So those rules are heightened, and you get more strict scrutiny. In legislative or rulemaking matters, so anything that's not quasi-judicial, you also should not vote if you have, or there's reasonable or objective evidence that you have an unalterably closed mind on matters critical to the disposition of the matter or issue upon which you are voting. So that's very circumstantial. I don't know exactly how you prove that. As Canoff has said before, you kind of know it when you see it. There's really no clean benchmark for when you're there. But that's the benchmark for purposes of non- quasi-judicial matters. As a general rule, you may talk with your fellow commissioners about any topic outside of a meeting. However, do not talk about city business if you see there's a quorum present. Never agree to swap votes. No horse trading of votes, guys. That'll get you in trouble. And do not ever indicate that your vote is unchangeable. This should only occur after deliberation has occurred at a public meeting. You can, the law says that you can have your mind firmly made up on an issue, and you can, I mean, you can even campaign on a particular issue. However, when a matter comes to a vote, you cannot indicate to the public that your mind is fully made up before you hear the public debate. It's grounds to have it overturned, all right? That's the conflict of interest that we're talking about. Your mind is made up. It's unalterably changed before you've had the opportunity for the public to input. Social media guidelines. These are just helpful, practical rules to comply with the prior guidelines I've given you when you're on social media. I recommend refraining from posting on each other's Facebook pages, or similar social media pages, to avoid engaging in a public discussion that can turn into the same sort of issue as a, you know, a "reply all" on an email thread. Do not post confidential information or information discussed in executive session. Sometimes there's people who are in the public eye, who like to vent when things don't go their way politically, by spotting off on Facebook. None of you guys seem to have any issues with that. But you can affect your confidentiality rights by posting things publicly. Utilize a disclaimer that you speak for yourself when posting on matters of public interest. You guys are agents of the city, and you give up certain constitutional rights to free speech when you take the seats that you're in right now. And as a result, I caution you, if you're going to get out and speak on behalf of the town, do not give the impression that you are speaking on behalf of the town. Because people will take that as you are speaking on behalf of the town, because you are a commissioner. And you only cast one vote of nine. So resist that temptation, even if you're hot on a particular issue. You only speak for yourself, unfortunately. Politely rebuff comments and lobbying efforts of any type regarding quasi-judicial issues. If you're dealing with a neighbor who's got a, you know, a building permit, or zoning, or variance issue that's coming before this board, don't be surprised if you get Facebook comments and, you know, lobbying efforts through your social media pages. You've got to deflect those again. If they send you something in writing, just offer to print that material and share it with the commission, but do not engage them in conversation about it. Again, you can politely explain the reason that you're not, but I recommend taking those materials and bringing them to the board. And then consider abstaining from voting on any quasi-judicial issue involving those who are Facebook friends, and/or consider utilizing a separate public and private page. You guys are all politically elected officials, and as a result, many of you may enjoy the campaigning process on social media. I recommend maybe having a campaign-related page, where you can have everybody as your friend, or even make it totally public. But then have a dedicated private page that is not dedicated to city business, and that's where you should have a limited number of people who are actually friends of yours. And maybe just post pictures of your children or animals, and vacations, and food, and that kind of thing. And keep you out of trouble in that way. The last on my list here concerns the duties of you guys as commissioners and the city manager. First of all, the city manager has the following duties. It's her job to enforce all the city ordinances, either directly or through her staff. It's her job to supervise the administration of city affairs, to prepare the agenda for the body with the help of the finance officer, to make recommendations to the body concerning city affairs, and to appraise the body of the city's finances, to submit an annual budget prior to August 1st of each year, to perform and to enforce the terms of all contracts and franchises of which the city is a party, to sign all warrants legally approved by the body for the payment of all money in all contracts over $200, except for necessities, which must be approved by the body, to prepare, to introduce, and to discuss all ordinances and resolutions, to appoint and to remove all officers and employees, or to do the same through delegation to a department head. That's Amy's job. You guys gotta let Amy do her job. By contrast, the commissioners, either individually or as a body, have the following responsibilities. It's their job to inquire of city employees. And inquiry is meaning, ask Amy, and she shall provide you information. It does not allow you to direct city employees. It's your job to review issues presented by the city manager, to consider public input with the limitations that we've already discussed, to vote on all issues within the limitations that I've discussed, and to appoint and remove the city manager, finance officer, city attorney, and library board of trustees. You guys may not give orders to city employees, other than through Amy, or myself, or Al. If you do so, you can be charged with a class-two misdemeanor. So avoid the temptation to try to micromanage, or go around Amy in particular for management of staff. You guys can get in trouble.
Are there particular, I was thinking that there is something carved out, though, like, I just need a couple facts, and if it takes less than 10, 15 minutes from a particular city employee, that you can reach out to them for some facts, and that they can provide those back to you. Is that, is that something that we're also needing to be aware of here again tonight?
The statute specifically says you cannot give orders. But in order to keep yourself out of trouble, my recommendation is to funnel that through Amy. Amy might say, go ahead and, you know, call Adam. He can answer your question. You know what I mean? Get permission from her to communicate with the staff. I just think the, if you're, not only could it be catastrophic if you're actually charged, it would be sort of a public relations nightmare. But in addition, if you're convicted, you're automatically removed from office. So the consequences are embarrassing and problematic. So it's not one that I'd really want to mess around with. So my recommendation would be filter requests for information through Amy, and she can direct you from there. If staff are better suited to answer the question, she'll probably just forward you on. And then the additional duties of the mayor. Because you elected him, Mayor Hoffner gets to preside over this commission. He gets to receive service of process and litigation. And you get to be the head of the city for military and ceremonial purposes. Get to kiss babies, Jake, and parades and whatnot. The coolest thing is, in the times of public danger of emergency, Jake gets to take command of the police, appoint additional police to govern, or appoint additional police and govern by proclamation, and to call on adults to aid in the enforcement of laws, and to call out any organized militia within the county to suppress any riots or other disorderly conduct. So if all law and order falls apart, Jake is going to save the world. Anybody have any other questions?
Any more questions?
Those are undefined terms, by the way.
Where's our militia? Anybody have any more questions? Thank you, City Attorney Dan Herter. And we'll move on to number two, which is also City Attorney Dan Herter, memorandum 17-145 for the City Attorney, conflict of interest.
I moved the memorandum.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
So this is the letter agreement that relates to the attorney that I've lined up to assist the city in the event I have a conflict of interest for purposes of nuisance abatement lawsuits. On the criminal side of things, it's no big deal, because we have an understanding with the state's attorney's office, if I have a conflict of interest, if my personal clients are in trouble, but their services do not extend to the civil arena. So this just covers those few situations in the small town where my own clients are the offenders that won't clean up their property. So it's an hourly contract, $150 an hour for those few times when we have to deal with this.
Any questions from the public? Roll call, please.
Heard it.
Stand.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
And Off.
Aye.
Ibaugh.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Serta.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye. Motion carried. Moving on to number three, memorandum 17-143, in regards to the YRA request for funding for the big party. I think we can hear from, because we had a little confusion, and some of the people called and couldn't make it. But maybe Steve or Jim, you can enlighten us a little bit before we can talk about this. Could you? My name is Steve Hamilton. I've been a member of the YRA since its founding in 1992. I'm the secretary and the newsletter editor. So I kind of keep track of information going on in the organization. 2018 is the 75th anniversary of the dedication of Yankton's airport. Of course, it was not called Chan Gurney at the time. That changed in 1965. The YRA has a couple of members, Francis Surr and Butch Becker, who are on a committee, trying to organize an agenda for a celebration that would occur in the third weekend of September of 2018. They've gotten an award or a grant, I'm not sure what you would call it, from a local bank for $6,500 toward that celebration. Our organization, a couple of weeks ago, voted to match $5,000 of our treasury against whatever would be contributed by the city toward this city celebration. It's not a celebration of the YRAA. It's a celebration of the airport. And we, being a general aviation organization, want to promote general aviation at this airport and our local airports. And so we're volunteering to take on this celebration, but we need some financial assistance. And I believe that's what Francis Surr and Butch Becker were doing in this request for funding from the city. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm not on the committee, but I'd be happy to attempt any answer.
Any questions?
I have a question. What would the funds be used for? You talked about static aircraft, I think I saw. What does that mean?
Right. That's an excellent question. One, they have several possibilities. There are a couple of T-6 training aircraft that were used in World War II. One is in Storm Lake, and one is in Sioux Falls. Those, if we pay for their fuel, or some additional funding, would come down and sit their airplanes here for people to look at, much like the B-25 that was here last year, and the Tri-Motor, Ford Tri-Motor that was here a few years ago. The premier aircraft, I believe they're checking into, is a DC-3, because DC-3s were commercial aircraft that serviced our airport back in the 50s, I believe. They're also talking about the possibility of the Redtail Group come. And the Redtail Group, of course, is P-51 that was flown by the Tuskegee Airmen in World War II. That's the Black Squadron. They have a semi-truck. And inside, they show movies, 45 minutes to an hour, I believe. And they have all sorts of memorabilia, and inform the public about the value of the Tuskegee Airmen and the Redtail Squadron. I believe they alone are $10,000 to get to come here for the weekend. I don't know what the other figures are for the other aircraft, but it's basically a show where people can come and see old aircraft that, at one time or another, were here at this, not necessarily personally here, but were here over time. So it's basically an aviation celebration.
And Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but the YRA is taking the lead in having this celebration. They picked a date. It coincides with our annual flying breakfast, which last year we had 1,000 people attend. So that is happening the third weekend in September, correct? And the YRA is doing it, but depending upon how much, how many aircraft we want displayed, how big a show, I should say, right?
Yes.
But the city's not putting it on. We'd probably have a proclamation, or a...
Right. I would believe a proclamation would be in hand. There are, as I understand it, five, is it five people, or is it four people? There's Butch Becker, Francis Surr on the committee, Brittany LaCroix, did I say that right? The event planner is on the committee. Colleen Bailey is on the committee. And am I missing somebody? Was it five? Jim, do you know?
I don't know.
It's those four, for sure. And they've had a couple of meetings. And Francis is taking the lead on, trying to identify aircraft that could come in, and what their cost would be.
So as of now, there'll be approximately a $6,500 show, plus the YRA has their normal breakfast. And any money this body would approve, if any, would be matched by the YRA to put on more display aircraft. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And the YRA has set an upper limit of $5,000.
Any questions?
Charlie, I just would like to know why, you know, thank you for the presentation, but why we wouldn't throw this in the pot for the July 10th, I mean, table it tonight until July 10th, because this is another one of those, like the Yankton Area Arts, a special request. It's for next year. So we haven't made that commitment yet for the outside agencies. This is just one more to add to the list.
This is for 2018?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be the third weekend in September of 2018.
All right.
I would like to add one comment. Kim Cox, this is going to be next year, but these flying groups get booked up real quick. And so we have to, if we're gonna pay for somebody to come here, we're gonna have to do it pretty quick, because they're already getting booked for next year, as we sit right here tonight. So we don't have the luxury of waiting till 1st of January, or anything like this, to book some of these organizations.
Thank you, Jim.
Yep.
Jim, quick question. Jake mentioned 1,000 people came to the last event. I'm just curious, maybe between the two of you, what are your expectations for this 2018 event? And how can this infusion of cash from the city help to get you to the number that I'm hoping you got in your head?
Well, we're just kind of basing it off of what the B-25 brought in, and the Tri-Motor Ford brought in. And those two airplanes in themselves brought in quite a few people. They were supposed to be basically a Sunday show, or something like this, you know? And there was people out there, just as soon as that thing landed, you know, there was 50 or 60 people out there at the airport, just instantly. And so there is quite a bit of interest in it. I think that we're gonna have to, the 75th anniversary, I think we need to really ballyhoo this thing. And if we're gonna do it all in one weekend, we're gonna have to make this aviation weekend in Yankton, South Dakota, and prepare for to have to make this aviation weekend in Yankton, South Dakota, and prepare for, if the weather is nice, it's going, it'll be a big event, there's no doubt about it.
I might add that we had an estimated 2,000 people for the B-25 and over 2,000 people for the Tri-Motor, and that was with a little bit of advertising. They had three flights of the B-25, and I believe they had 12 or 13 flights that had nine people...
Steve, could you step up a little closer, some people from the outside?
The Tri-Motor had about 12 or 13 flights of nine passengers each, and they were really shocked because they had only maybe four flights in Mitchell and about that number up in Aberdeen, so we had a tremendous turnout here in this town for both those events.
And I was out there for two days with the B-25 and never touched the thing.
Is this something that will, like, the semi-truck with the movie, is this something that can be there for more than just that Sunday, then? Is it something that, like, you're thinking about a weekend or Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Well, we know they're going to have to come in and...
Could you step up, Jim?
Yeah, they need you on the microphone so they can...
We know they're going to have to come in a day early at least to, you know, set up and stuff, so they'll, if we say it's going to be on a Sunday, it'll end up being somewhat a Saturday and Sunday thing, so...
My understanding is they are planning a two-day event, because a lot of these guys with the T-6s and other aircraft, they just don't like to come in the same day for a static display and then go home, you know, for weather reasons, they do come in early, and I think they are planning on a two-day event. The breakfast, of course, would just strictly be on Sunday.
But if I follow Mr. Surr's letter to, or email to the city, he was asking for the city to organize and run this event, that's not your request, you're just requesting funding. You don't want the city to be in charge of this whole event.
From our meetings that we've had for the YRA, my understanding is that we were going to take the lead, but we're looking for matching funding from the city.
Funding only, okay.
That's my understanding.
Quick question, then. Thousands of people that we're talking about, where are they coming from?
We had people drive down from Mitchell to fly on the Tri-Motor, even though it was being scheduled for Mitchell. We had lots of people from Sioux City. I'd say it will draw 60 to 70 miles, and with advertising could draw even further.
The, we have a budgeting meeting coming up on the 10th, and I think what Charlie says makes sense in that, you know, we'll be shoring up the budget next month, I think we could put this through the budget and have the discussion there. Also, since we've got Brittany LaCroix as part of that, we can sort of verify the city's role in what the city's doing, because the email says that the city should plan and promote it, and you're saying, "Well, I think it's just the money, and I think we just want to clarify what the city's, what the expectation is on that."
Right, I don't think, Jim or right, either of us are speaking officially for the committee. We're just spouting or replying to what we've heard in our meetings.
Right, yeah, and I think with Brittany, she's part of the committee, it'd be easy enough for us to get that information and run that through our budget session, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Is this something that we need to make action, or have we just moved to table it?
Move to table?
I moved to table this, a second.
It's been motioned to table and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Jim and Steve. Number four, under new business, a bid award for Maple Street seventeen-one-four-seven.
Move the memorandum.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Anybody from the public? I'm going to get Adam up here. Roll call, please.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Myner.
Aye.
Moeser.
Aye.
Sardar.
Aye.
Hurdy.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner. Aye. Motion carried. Number five, we're going to strike. Do you want to say why, Amy, please?
Yes, Chief Kurtinbach contacted my office this morning, this afternoon, and indicated that the request should be struck. The individual was not able to acquire the pyrotechnics that they need for the event, so they would like to strike it from the agenda.
Okay.
I don't think so. I think we can just move on. Correct, Russ?
Okay, thank you. The final item on the agenda under new business is number six, memorandum of understanding between the Bonhomme County and City of Yankton, seventeen-one forty-eight.
Move the memorandum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion among the commission?
So as I understand it, we give like 72 hours, then, free, and then after that point, it's $75 an hour.
Correct. And is that in one sitting or one use, or combined for the entire year?
Twelve consecutive months.
Any more questions? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Myner.
Aye.
Moeser.
Aye.
Sardar.
Aye.
Hurdy.
Gross.
Aye.
I, motion carried. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss personnel and contractual matters under South Dakota Code of Law one dash twenty-five dash two.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, everyone, for coming.